Might wanna reach out to your treasurer.
Well, that's why I'm saying hopefully by then things will get done, but in the meantime, we can probably look at what it looks like now and kind of start discussing it.
Yeah, and I definitely wanna know what's the impact on the errors that were caught and changed regarding prior years? How's that all flush out? We still don't know that. We definitely need to know that, of course.
Right, so I just wanna put it on there if you want, because you had mentioned it, we didn't discuss it last meeting, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
I didn't know if you wanted to get that on the calendar yet. If you wanna think about that, we can talk about it.
Yeah, we can see maybe what Michelle and Kylie would have ready for next Tuesday. See if they have the impacts first, right?
Okay.
And give us updates, or maybe put it to the agenda on Tuesday and see.
So that you wanna put in the agenda for next Tuesday?
Well, the department heads, where are they on any budget? You guys on?
Well, this is something that we as a board, we can also make decisions that go with the department heads too.
Wow.
So.
Be nice to involve them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we'll put that, I just wanna make sure that's not missed.
Yeah, so do you wanna just put it on for, just have it as an agenda item and we can, Michelle and Kylie can update us on where they're at?
Yeah.
Alright, so then the only amendment to this agenda would be to set date for closed session.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. By removing the resolution and adding discussion on.
Set a special date.
Set an end.
A discussion. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. This is the time we have the public comment. The resolution has been removed from the agenda, so that was the only action item. So there really is no time for public comment at this point. So we're gonna go on to the discussion about ADA compliance. We have our state ADA liaison, Molly, please pronounce your last name.
Webker.
Webker, here, and who's agreed to do a walkthrough with us to kinda look at the annex building to see what it's about, you know, what she thinks, any recommendations? Is it grandfathered in? Are there things that need to be done? And I thank you very much for doing that, and at no cost to the county too. I appreciate that as well. So, I will let you take the floor. If you wanna speak from there, if you wanna go up there, whichever you're most comfortable with.
Yeah.
Do you approve with me? Do you approve? As amended, do you approve it? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I mean, I can, I can sit here. It's fine if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think in our, just in our discussion in terms of the annex building, my role would just be to go around and look at, I think primarily one of the issues was looking at the bathrooms and just making sure that they're compliant, and so that's what I plan to do here today. And I'm, it sounds like people will be joining me when I'm doing that. Is that correct? Okay.
And bathrooms are like right there.
Okay.
So you know what, very far to walk, it's out in the foyer and out there, and then also the elevator, because that would be the way from.
To get down, yeah. So I'll, I'll look at the accessible route, and I'll even look at the outside to the inside too. But yeah, I guess just so anyone in this room, I'm from Great Plains ADA Center, and that's Iowa's Regional ADA Center. And so we cover Iowa, Nebraska, Kansas, and Missouri, and I serve as the Iowa liaison for them. And so that's through the ADA National Network, which is covered by a federal grant. So, just, yeah, I wanna thank you for inviting me, and we'll, we'll go through and I'll, I'll do an assessment here whenever that works.
Okay, so the board, last time you had mentioned that you wanted to join and you agreed with that, so how, how would you? If you want us to just tell her to do this, we follow along with her and take notes, or how, you wanna just let her go and do it, and then?
It might be easier for you.
If I just go and do it and I can report to you some things?
That might be even better.
Okay, that sounds great. I can do that.
I can go and tell her what doesn't work.
There you go, yeah, that's always good, for sure.
My husband also, he is disabled, so, you know, there's a, there's a personal matter there, she, where I can. We're seeing, we're seeing things that, that you think are ADA, and you discover when you're in the midst of that, they're not ADA.
Yes, and that's, that's just the case when you're working with kind of historic and, or just older buildings, so, yeah.
So, yeah, so what I'll do, if the board's okay with that, I can join you and take notes, and, or all three of us, I'm fine with all three of us going, you can rather. But, cuz that was the original thought.
I've been through every nothing for any.
Okay, so.
Custodian was sick, it was me who scrubbed all the bathrooms, so.
And so you don't have to walk it in so often?
Yeah, I've been through every nothing.
You'll wait, okay. So what we'll do is, you guys just talk amongst yourselves, we're gonna do it. I don't think it'll take that long.
No.
No.
Is it officially recessed? Yeah, that's recessed, it's a walk.
Do you wanna do the recess and walk?
I will move that hogs and stands will do a walking around tour, and then we'll recess and make returns.
Okay, so temporary recess to do the walk through?
Yeah.
Well, no, actually, we can't go to recess because we don't, that's a walk and core of them, so we have to stay in open meeting.
Alright.
So.
Allow you to go.
Yes. So we can both walk and walk? Actually.
Violating any open meeting laws?
Well, the public can follow us.
Because if the public can know what they want.
Yeah, the public can follow us.
Just have it recorded.
So.
Yeah, record.
Here's the, the way to the food, this is accessible right off the main door. We are gonna be replacing the doors to, with sliding doors upstairs in the next month.
Okay.
I'm gonna take it.
Yep.
Go to one.
Yeah, go to one.
Going up or she just?
So I like to kinda start from the outside and then work my way down.
Okay.
Just kinda using like the. User experience.
Okay. So here's the ramp over here.
Yep. So this is where the accessible portion is. So this is the parking spot, this is the parking spot, it's not a parking spot? This is a parking spot here that's not a parking spot. Okay. So, I don't know if you want me to talk out loud, just kinda as we go. So one of the big things is that you have accessible parking, you need to have access aisles. And so you'd have like a parking spot, then maybe this one would be the access aisle. So this would be the area where no one would park. And then this would maybe then be turned into the other accessible parking spot?
Okay.
And so then it would serve basically this access aisle for both.
Okay, so we'd have to remark it?
You'd have to remark. And, and there's specific guidelines in the ADA in terms of what the width of those parking stalls should be.
Okay.
And what the width even of the access aisle should be. But all that's kinda listed and labeled in the ADA.
Okay.
But yeah, this would be one thing that seems to me like a pretty easy thing to do. It's really just remarking.
Okay.
And I would have to, I can do this before, if I did, but you know exactly, like what is, how does this parking up here?
Up here, you're parking right here, and then there's parking right there.
So does that whole, like lot, that fat apartment?
No, no. It's just the parking right there in the middle, where you see that silver car there?
Yep, yep.
And then they, we don't currently use the drive-through, so people do park underneath there.
On that.
And that truck right there, that's parked there too.
Okay, okay, yeah, and I, so I would, so there's also, like you have a certain amount of accessible stalls per like total of parking. So I would just have to go and count how many to know how many you have to have here.
Okay.
And so I can do that later.
Okay.
On my way, I mean, I plan to kind of write up stuff too and send it to you?
Awesome.
But I do know that just from looking at this, that there has to be accessible or access aisles. So that's if a car is coming in, and they have a person in a wheelchair or mobility device, that they have a space where they can get out and there's no traffic that could potentially harm them. So that's what those access, when you see those diagonal lines, that's what those are.
Okay.
So that would just be something we want.
Okay.
So then, if they're coming, are these just the only ones, or is there any other?
These are the only ones.
Okay.
Yep, well that's true, the parking is there.
Okay, perfect, I'm just gonna measure this. So that meets it. It's, so you want it to be thirty-six inches, and so it is thirty-six inches, so that's good. And then, you know, and you've been cleaning, yep. That's what I was gonna say, you were already on it.
Yep.
Since it's an accessible route, we just wanna make sure whether it's the leaves or snow, all of that. So then, okay, thank you.
So we're gonna be putting slider doors in here, and those are actually on floor.
Okay, so just the automatic slide on.
On both sides, this side there.
That's great. Okay, so then with the elevator, so the elevator, there's no braille on it.
Okay.
So like no tap title or anything like that. There's also no like auditory signal, so telling you that, that the door's open, like there's no cue to tell me that. And then even when I get in and I push the button, like there's no auditory cue.
Okay.
There's nothing telling me that I've arrived at the floor, so when I, when I took it up, you know, if I were blind, I wouldn't have had anything to tell me.
Yeah.
So that's just one of those things too.
So is that based on current standards, or is that the?
That is current standards.
Okay.
Yep, for elevators, yep.
So how would we know if this was a grandfathered building? So it was built in nineteen seventy-two or seventy-four?
Right, and it hasn't had any major renovations since then? When was the elevator put in?
It was part of the building.
Part of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there is potential that that would be like a safe harbor.
Okay.
But I would, I'll have to look into it.
Okay.
And just check.
Okay.
So there is something where if it was built before the ADA was even a law, then it's called safe harbor. Because obviously you can't make something ADA if you don't even, if it didn't exist. So, so that's something that I would have to just check. You said the date again was?
I think it was either seventy-two or seventy-four.
Seventy-two or seventy-four, and this is the original elevator, isn't it?
Wow, I think so.
Yes, yes, it is.
It is the original elevator?
I've researched others for a long time, so it is.
Awesome, okay, good deal. So yeah, so then I mean, with that, it might be a grandfathered in.
Okay.
So, I mean, you're welcome to join me, I don't know how many people would be getting this.
Oh, I can walk down.
Okay, see there, so I'm gonna.
There we go.
So again, like there's no braille on here to show that it's a B.
So we can easily add that.
Yep, you can add the braille, that should be good.
Auditory one.
Right, yep.
Cuz I don't, I've been in newer buildings in Des Moines, and I don't have any auditory.
Right, right, yeah. But it is, it is in the ADA, it is a, it is a requirement.
Okay.
So like when we, when we landed, there was nothing kinda signaling.
That was landed, other than?
So it's actually, no, it's not. So this is, it's too high, it's about a inch.
By less than an inch?
Yeah, so, well, so forty-eight, forty-eight inches, so it's more than that. It's about fifty-three.
Oh, that's the button versus the, yeah.
Yeah, cuz this is the actual operable part.
Okay.
So you're always measuring with the operable parts, so same as these, these are considered operable parts in the ADA. So like light switches and things like that, so that's like, that's probably why this was installed at forty-eight, was because it's right at forty-eight, which is the max that you can be for reach range.
What about the buttons inside? Are they gonna need to be, are they low enough?
I didn't check, but I could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so those are, look, just as high. Yeah, so the, like the open door, which is the lowest switch, is about fifty-two inches. Your, your emergency phone in here should be okay, yep. So your, the like emergency line phone is okay though, where it's placed.
Okay.
So then, we were talking about, cuz again, what, do they get services in here?
So zoning is right here.
Okay.
We have emergency management over here, but generally the public does not see them necessarily all the time. But this is a very active office right here.
Okay, this is an active office where they would potentially get services and come, okay. Okay, so.
But they would be doing it here.
They, so they would come here first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So. For this, and this, so this is kinda, this is fixed, and again, I think this is kinda one of those grandfather things. But you usually want like an accessible counter, so this is like a service counter where people come to get service. And so you'd want something that would be lower.
Could the folks come out here and just service?
They can, they can, yeah. So if it can be kind of an equivalent where they're coming around and get service, or you just say, come in around and get service, that's fine too.
Okay.
Yeah. Is it really when they get in there, like what is the service that they're getting?
Building permits, sewer stuff?
Are they filling out things when they come in? So they just need a table essentially to be able to fill out?
Or a clipboard or a thing.
Okay, okay, and that should be fine, yeah, just as long as you have an accessible, like maybe table that they can sit at, where they can go underneath with the proper knee clearance to be able to fill out that kinda stuff. So, so bathrooms, I know are a big one.
Yes, so we have the men's restroom on the left and the women's restroom on the right.
Okay, so I'm just gonna knock on here first and just make sure, is it multiple stalls?
There's two.
Hello? Is everybody in here? Sorry? Okay. So, you don't, there isn't an accessible stall?
There is none.
Yes, so accessible stall needs to be basically sixty inches wide.
Okay.
As far as, as the depth, it might even be short too. So the width of this stall, right now, is about thirty-six inches.
Okay.
And needs to be sixty for width.
So could we take out this one wall and make, I'll make the whole thing?
You could, so that's where you just need to check plumbing code.
Okay.
Because you, cuz you might have a certain number of toilets that you need for the building.
Oh, okay.
And so that would be checking just kind of whatever, if it's a city code or a state code to make sure. Cuz that's something we often run into, like, oh, well, let's just make, you know, it bigger, but then we have to lose a toilet, but then that might then interfere with plumbing.
Okay, or we could take out a sink?
Yes, I do think you could take out a sink. There isn't like where you have to have a certain number of sinks, I believe, so. But again, I'm not the expert on the plumbing code, that would be someone else, but I can connect you to those people.
That would be great.
But granted, that is an idea, it's always something to explore is, can we remove one of the toilets and just basically have one singular stall?
Okay. I'd rather not have just one stall for the building.
Right.
It would probably be better to take out a sink and, you know.
And then to kind of shift everything down?
Shift everything down, you'd make this one the accessible by moving it over.
Sure, yeah.
Would that, would that automatically put us into where we have to comply with the most modern codes because we're taking out a wall?
Yes, so that would be where, then you'd start to get kinda down where you're doing a major like alteration.
Correct.
And then, and then you would have to make sure that anything kind of to that is also accessible. Sorry, I'm just gonna try to hold this. So yeah, so if you did take it out, you would definitely need that sixty inches.
Okay.
So.
Okay, but if we took, if, if we took out a sink, and just took this wall out, moved it here, and took out the sink, would that be sixty inches? So this would be the handicap and that one would not?
Oh, so this would be the handicap, just a different option?
Just a different option, cuz I'm trying to minimize the amount of work.
Right, I mean, it's, it's, so you're just saying take out this right here, and then it would be from here to here essentially?
Yes.
I'll try to kind of eyeball it, I can't say it's gonna be perfect. I'll just go in here actually. We'll see. So this is about thirty-one inches in here, and then let's just say. I mean, am I roughly in the middle? So thirty-two, so yeah, I mean, you'd be pretty close to that sixty inches wide.
And because if we decide to do that, because we're doing modifications, this whole area would have to be up to modern standards?
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
So the only thing that I want you to be mindful of too, is if you were to, let's say, take this out, okay? So you also have to have thirty by forty-eight clear floor space in front of each fixture. So right now, we could probably argue that you don't have that because of this.
We could move that.
You, you, you could, and I would recommend recessing it like you recessed it here, just to give you more room. So, cuz yeah.
To recess it?
Yeah, cuz it's kinda recessed in. So this, right here, is, would be a protruding object.
Okay.
Well, it's, I guess it's probably not a protruding object because you have this as cane detectable underneath it.
Well, I'm sure there's more modern.
Yeah.
Things we could, part of the update, we can make, I'm sure they have better options for towel things.
Sure, and I mean technically, this is your towel thing, you just kinda added it to it, so.
So that's automatically recessed, we didn't?
Yeah, so I don't know if there was something.
Who knows? No, I don't.
So yeah, I mean, if you could just get rid of this altogether and have this, then it'd be totally fine. Basically, anything that's protruding, if it's more than four inches off of the wall, and it is between kind of the protruding zone, which is basically twenty-seven to eighty inches. So because this is here down here, then it's cane detectable, so I think it's fine. However, you know, it does kind of impede on someone's ability to have like that thirty by forty-eight inches of clear floor space, although it doesn't go all the way to the ground.
Could we also put a trash underneath the sink with a hole?
You could.
And then put the tile recessed over the sink and just eliminate this whole thing?
Well, you do have to have a proper knee clearance, so I think if you actually put it under the sink, then you'd be impeding on the knee clearance then too.
Okay.
So I mean, the wall is a good place, I think if you actually do wonder if it was more here.
Okay.
Then that might, might be better.
Okay.
And again, I mean, if you're kind of having to re-figure this, whoever is your contractor, they're going to be able to, yeah.
Okay, okay, alright.
So, but there, you do have space. And again, I mean, another thing to think about is if you wanted it to be a single user, cuz you could make this a single user, and then the men's bathroom a single user, and you have two single user, so that men and women could use both of them.
Oh, so basically you're a sex, both of them are sex?
Yes.
Oh, okay, we don't know based on, it is.
Again, you'd have to check plumbing code, so that might not even work, but it's, it's something.
Okay.
To think about too.
Somebody said the men's room is a single.
Are you okay, why you didn't check that out too?
Yes, as long as there's no men in there.
Yep, of course.
I didn't realize it was a single user.
Hello? Oh, this one is? Oh, and this has a.
It is a single user.
And it's handicap. Okay.
Oh, it is handicap already.
Yeah.
Is that compliant?
So. No, it's still not compliant.
Still not compliant.
Because you have to have a certain amount of width to be able to back your, it's about thirty-six inches, I believe, back your wheelchair in.
Okay.
To then be able to do the transfer, so there has to be more space.
So your urinal needs to be moved?
Would have to be moved, yeah.
Okay, well, we can flip, we can flip that, just flip the pipe and move it right here.
Yeah, I mean, you, you do have space to do that.
It's awfully close to the towel thing.
It is, close to towel, again, the towel thing.
Can be moved, we could put on that wall.
Could be moved over there, yes. And then we just wanna make sure that there's basically like a thirty by forty-eight, what would that be?
Oh.
Yeah, we can check that. It is, it has to be at least twenty-seven, and it's just shy of it.
What's the word?
Just shy of it.
I mean, this is part of the older standards, cuz this is, this looks newer than that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, there's, so before the ADA, there was the, the UFAST, it's like the Uniform Accessibility Standards. And so I wonder if it was or not, but.
You said it's just under twenty-seven inches?
It was about twenty-six and three-fourths, I mean, it was.
Oh geez.
And it needs to be twenty-seven?
Correct, it needs to be at least twenty-seven, yep.
And then the, the.
That's for knee clearance.
So the urinal, the, the space between the toilet and the urinal is too narrow.
Yes, that's too narrow.
Thirty-six inches is not?
I, I believe, I believe it does have to be. I can check real quick. Kinda get, so I don't get my numbers confused.
So the concern I have here, it's a single use, there's no way to lock, is there? Oh, there is a lock.
Yeah.
Now, do the doors themselves have to be ADA to have a little press button, or no?
So you, you do not have to have the press button door, that's not a requirement.
Okay.
If you did decide to put them in, then there are specific requirements that you would have to have. I mean, it is nice if you have it.
Okay.
I will say, to be able to have, otherwise you could have people asking for help.
To open the door.
To open the door continuously, so I would say, I mean, it is definitely encouraged.
Okay.
And then if you did do it, there are certain specifications that you would have to meet, but it is not a requirement.
Okay. I did not realize it's a single use. I didn't either.
But I don't think it is single use because we have it listed as men.
Right.
Well, there's an sign. There's an "and" underneath, so it was that.
Right, so.
And handicap.
Right, yeah, and so, I mean, it's, so basically this is the room for people who just feel as to use, is what they're saying, to come in here.
To use the men's restroom?
Yeah, okay. But. The women's, because you have both a men's and a women's, you do have to have two accessible stalls. So I think this is probably programmatically trying to like.
Be compliant?
Be compliant, but technically, if you have a men's and a women's, you need to have two accessible stalls, both for a woman and for a man. That's why the single user restrooms are where people are starting to go construction wise, because then that way, you know, you can just make them both accessible, but then it doesn't really matter, it's men, women.
Couldn't we make like this one the accessible one, and this one just be a unisex?
Um, you, I think you could do that.
Be a unisex accessible, and then a unisex.
Yes.
Just normal.
Cuz I think that one might be easier to reconfigure.
Then we don't have any of those modifications, that could be fine as it is then.
Yes, though, I will say though.
It is not fine.
But I think the other thing then to think about there is just even some people, if there's multiple stalls, let's say, feeling like they have to share, you know, restroom. Opposite sex, there can be, also then, just other elements to it.
So if we do that, it should probably be a single stall like this on.
Yes.
And in which case, we'd have to check the plumbing code to see if it's okay having two bathrooms here, two individual commodes is sufficient for the building. And in which case, we'd have to check the plumbing code to see if it's okay having two bathrooms here, two individual commodes is sufficient for the building.
Yeah.
So, and if it is, then that solves our problem. We would just have to reconfigure that D1 stall. And, yeah. I'd be curious to know if there's ever a line, outside of when there's supervisor meetings, if there's ever an issue. With having enough restroom space, I mean, of course, the code is what we gotta be driven by, but.
Right, and this, and you, this is the only restroom in the whole entire building, okay, yeah. Yeah, so I would definitely want to check, because, um, I don't know how many people occupants have here, and then that will drive whatever the plumbing code is.
Okay, well, we'll have to look into that. Yeah, because I don't know the number of occupants either, so, yeah. Okay, alright, wonderful. Alright, and for number of occupants, does it, how about number of public, that's hard to forget.
Right, right.
Yeah, is it just the number of employees, or how?
Yeah, I, I, I won't be able to tell you that, that would have to come from either city code, or whatever state code is for that.
Okay. We can check the city and, um, and the state, see what the code is, the plumbing code?
So I have a contact that I can refer you to.
Oh, that's great.
So his name is David Ruffcorn, um, and he is the person in charge of state code.
David Ruffcorn?
Ruffcorn, so yeah, R-U-F-F-C-O-R-N, corn.
Interesting.
I have his, yep, and I have his contact.
If you could send us, send us that.
Yep, yes.
His first name David?
David, yep. Okay.
Alright. So that?
And then, and then the other thing that would be in here, right, so then, the public comment, they should be able to come in and provide public comment, and that, I mean, looked.
And those doors are okay.
Yeah, that's good. Good there, I'll check the other one. Sorry, sir. Yep.
Okay.
Good, yeah, so then, um, and you leave this open.
We leave it open unless it's a closed meeting, which is on a book, shit, and then.
And if it's a closed meeting, is it closed to the public? Alright, yeah.
Um, do we, did she look at the other entrance and exit, don't, just, do you need to look at that? That's fire code, though, that wouldn't be ADA. No, I mean upstairs, we just looked at the north side. Does it only, do we have to have both entrances ADA, or just one, is it okay to have one ADA?
It's okay to have one ADA.
Okay, so there's nothing to look at then, on that other side?
Yeah, we, the only thing would be, do you have signage that says that that is the ADA entrance?
Okay, so we need to add signage? Yeah, I don't think we do.
So that would be the only big thing, it's to try to direct people to where the accessible parking is, and where the accessible route is.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I think. Should we go back in and? Yeah, we'll go back in. Is there anything else you think would be, need to look at?
Um, I mean, as far as the any other services upstairs, I mean, are those all from public?
Yes, their doors are all the same size.
All the same size, okay, yeah. Um, and it's mostly, they're just filling in paperwork, correct, so as long as there is just some, like, accessible table counter where they can. Um, complete that paperwork. And again, um, so I, I'm kind of giving you like a quick and dirty ADA assessment, and so if you guys wanted like a full ADA assessment, um, I mean, or. Um, we could look into that, but, um. Just, yeah.
So, so, um, because, I mean, you and I talked on the phone about why we're doing this, about thinking selling the building.
Yep.
Right fund, so we can update the courthouse, then, if necessary, I think this building is.
Yep.
So, um, but you had said there's, we have to have a plan.
Right, okay, so that's, that's a big thing, do you, do you know if you guys have a plan?
No, we don't.
Okay, yeah, so that is where, um, um, that would be, I, I think, a big thing to kind of, uh, talk about, um, because. Uh, every city, because you have more than fifty employees, correct, um, need to have a ADA self-evaluation that's been done. Um, and then, from that, and that involves looking at all of the buildings in Winterset that are city-owned. Or county, county, excuse me, county, that's what I meant, sorry. Um, and so that would be, um, from the county, um, and.
These two buildings are really the only ones that go to.
Or county-owned, and that, or public used.
That are public used.
Okay, okay, perfect. Um, yeah, so it would just be, um, including that, but you'd also, um, you know, they, self-evaluation would include just even looking at accessibility of the programming that you're offering. Too, so policies, looking at all the policies and kind of going through that. Um, it would be also looking digitally, um, because the ADA has come out with, um, title two.
Title two for the website, yes.
Something digital accessibility.
And I know our website is not ADA.
Yes, and then also, for county, do you operate any parks, anything like that?
We do.
So then that would be a part of the self-evaluation, so it's really anything that the county owns, that's a built environment, would be a part of that.
Okay.
Um, because there are, there are regulations about recreational.
And we can, we can get experts, hire experts out.
Yep, 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 so. Um, so yeah, that would be where you're, you put out an RFP, and you're asking for somebody to come in.
Okay, but if we, to do the self-assessment, or after, after?
To help with the self-evaluation, yep, you can have people that, um, that do that.
And that could be part of our transition plan, we can document it, we want to be ADA accessible by such and such a year.
Exactly.
And then, the plan is to have an expert come in, do an evaluation.
Yes.
And then go from there.
Yes, and the other thing is, you know, having a designated ADA person, so, and that doesn't have to be like their title. Um, and it doesn't have to be in a full-time role, but you do have to be a person that, basically, I've taken responsibility for carrying all of this out, I'm the person that people go to for ADA. And that's important too, because if you have any public who want to ever submit grievance, or submit complaint, they need to know who to go to to do that. So that has to be public on your website too.
Okay, alright, well, we'll go ahead, let's go ahead and sit, we can kind of discuss what we just discussed. Alright, so we finished the walkthrough, and Molly, do you kind of want to get a gummy? Theory, I mean, I can go through our notes.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that, yeah, um, I'm gonna turn, so I can see everybody. Um, yeah, so we just, we started from outside, um, where, um, you know, a person with a disability would arrive at the accessible stalls. Um, one of the things in the ADA is that you have to have accessible stalls, but then you also have to have an access aisle. Um, and the access aisle is basically, if you've ever seen those diagonal lines, um, so that if a person is parking, um, and they have a wheelchair that they're getting out, they're not getting out into oncoming traffic. They have a place where there isn't any traffic, so that was just something where, you know, talking about, um, you know, uh, remarking those lines, and figuring that out. Um, uh, also, we talked about, um, that is the accessible route, uh, and so, since there is another kind of site arrival point. Also having signage outside, though, that would then direct those people and let them know that that's over there, you always want to try to limit, um, having to retrace steps as much as possible. So signage really helps with that, that's even something that could be communicated on your website, just letting people know like where things are, if they're ever going to come and visit. Um, and then, um, also, since it is an accessible route, you know, always the maintenance, right, of making sure. Um, at, that the cracks in the concrete and all of that, that there aren't kind of changes in level. Um, and that leaves are, are off, snow removal, all of that kind of stuff is going to be important, especially in Iowa. Um, and so, once we're inside, then, uh, we went down the elevator. So, one of the things with the elevator, um, is we have to make it accessible, obviously, for people who are with mobility devices, but also people who are blind or have low vision. Um, and that usually comes in the form of having braille, or like those raised tactile markers. Um, and right now, and I think because it sounds like the elevator is original from nineteen seventies, whenever it was put in, um, and that was before the ADA was even enacted, so, um, so there weren't any standards for them to follow. Um, but it doesn't have any braille, um, it also doesn't have any auditory signals that alert somebody saying like, the door is open, sometimes you'll hear that ding, that's an auditory alert for someone who's blind saying, okay. The door is open, or I've arrived at the lower level, like, those are what those are for. The other thing is the buttons on the door, on the elevator themselves, are outside of reach range, so, um, there is a, a reach range for people who are in wheelchairs, that shouldn't be above forty-eight inches, and those were above forty-eight inches. Um, so they wouldn't be, um, able to be reached by a person in a wheelchair, um, unless they have extraordinarily long arms. Um, the other thing is, then we looked at the bathrooms too, um, and so, in the women's restroom, there is not an accessible stall, there's no accessible stall, um, it has to have, be at least sixty inches wide. Um, to, a lot for a person in a wheelchair to be able to then, basically, have the room to transfer over onto the chair. Um, and to do a complete, like, turning radius when they're inside, or at least do like a T-turn. Um, and so, in the women's restroom, that would, that was, um, an issue, um, and going into the men's restroom, now, that has no stalls, it actually has, um, an accessible. Sign on it saying that this is the accessible bathroom. Um, now, that would be okay if this was single user bathrooms, um, but it's not, um, it's listed as men's, um, so it's kind of basically saying that only the men get the accessible bathroom. Um, and so that's why we just want to be clear that, um, you know, you, you either have two single user restrooms, and both are accessible. Um, or you maybe have one single user restroom, um, that's just kind of your standard, um, and then one, an accessible one. But again, it definitely needs to be revised, and, um, and a contractor would be able to work through that. Um, and get all of those dimensions, and kind of refigure the space so that it meets, um, standards. Um, and then the, I think the other thing, and let me know if I missed anything, but the last thing, um, was just because whenever you're coming for public comments. Um, or to do any services, um, just making sure that, um, if people are filling out papers, um, uh, the, the kind of service counters are pretty tall. Um, and so, a person who would be arriving in a wheelchair, that would be too tall to be able to use that table, so just making sure that you have an alternative, you know, table, and maybe on the inside. Where someone in a wheelchair could go underneath, and kind of fill out whatever paper there is too, um, and that could be a really simple, just adding a, a, a table. Um, with, with proper knee clearance underneath there, um, and then we just, we did talk about, um, having and doing it a full ADA self-evaluation, is that something you want me to talk about real quick too?
And the grandfathering, and the.
Sure.
The transition plan.
Yeah, so one of the, so one of the things is, because this, uh, because this building was built in the seventies, um, it was built before, um, the ADA was enacted, which was nineteen ninety. Um, and so, um, you know, it wasn't built to any kind of certain standard, or old standards. Um, and so unless there was a major alteration that took place in this building after, um, the ADA was enacted, then it would have been triggered to then be accessible. Um, and so they would have had to be following standards, it doesn't sound like there's been a major alteration since then, where they would have been brought to code. Um, and so in that case, there could be something called where it's kind of like safe harbor law, um, where it's, um, it's not necessarily has to be. Um, made to be accessible unless there is some sort of alteration. Um, the, if you do decide, though, to alter anything, a bathroom, or, um, anything that would be kind of a part of the accessible route. Then you would want to make sure that you're bringing it all to, um, the appropriate ADA standards, yeah.
So if we alter the men's bathroom, that will open us up to alter everything?
Yeah, you'll, you'll have to be considerate of all of like the accessible route, yes.
And if we fall under a safe harbor, then I think if somebody that can't reach the counter, don't you just simply take them over to that low table, Carly?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just, they just move over to that low table, yeah.
Well, and like our counter has like a little.
Yeah, you have a real long spot, and they just move them over there.
Yes, yeah, and that's, and that's completely fine, that's something that we consider as like a program access. Um, where, because the physical access is not accessible, then you're able to meet it through program measures. Um, and that's fine, but with the bathroom, that's, that's hard to do.
Could we make that, could we make it a, one time, one person at a time bathroom?
Yeah, a single user.
Yeah, just make a one, just so a guy will just have to wait.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, absolutely, I think that's actually, um, i- in the design field, that's where things are kind of going.
Yeah.
Um, where it's just considered like a single user restroom.
Male, female with a locked door.
Which is the same.
But we got to validate on plumbing code, and if we.
Correct.
Not going to be enough fixtures.
So that's where you run into it, is, is, um, because we were talking about in the women's restroom, well, could we just remove a toilet, um, to make that, that one then stall more accessible? Um, and that's an option, but you always have to check to see if that would interfere with plumbing code. Um, there's a certain amount of toilets that a building has to have, um, and that is not necessarily mandated by the ADA, that would be state or city code.
So if we decide, say, if we decide, even, like, say you say, okay, we're in safe harbor, but should we decide to actually make them both handicap accessible? You had told me about, you know, there's a transition, you are considered in compliance as long as there's a transition plan, can you explain that?
Yes, yes, so, um, every, uh, every, um, public entity, uh, under title two of the ADA. Um, you know, they're, uh, a state or a local government, essentially, so county would be, um, included in that, has to have what's referred to as an ADA self-evaluation plan. So they need to evaluate any of their spaces that they own or operate. Um, so this, if this building is one of them, then this needs to do a full ADA assessment, um, and then any other buildings, their parks, their website. Um, their programs, all of those have to be evaluated, and, and typically, that involves like an ADA, um, person to come in and actually do a full self-evaluation, is what that's referred to. Um, and then when they do that, then they, um, create a transition plan, so hey, here's kind of the things that are going on, that we're seeing, now, what's the plan to move towards compliance? Now, the ADA doesn't have any specific, like, you have to have everything compliant by this date, but it does need to show a good faith effort. So the first thing is, is really removing those readily achievable barriers, um, so like a readily achievable barrier would be changing the market markings on the outside of the parking stalls, right? That's a really easy, low-cost thing to do. Um, and so like anything like that, adding a table for people to be able to fill out anything that they need to do, those are readily achievable, um, barriers. So, um, those things are kind of usually the first, then you have things where, okay, this is going to be a big investment, this is going to cost a lot more money. Um, and so maybe now, we're kind of working towards, you know, five years down the road, whatever it might be, that, then we're going to do this, and then we're going to do this. So you usually have phases, this is kind of a phase plan, that's kind of worked out. Um, and ultimately, the biggest thing from the ADA is that they just want to see that you're obviously putting a good faith effort towards accessibility. That you are, you've done the ADA self-evaluation, you have a transition plan, and that you're following it to the best of your ability. Um, and it's just documented, you know, they just want that documentation process.
So if we do the lines, and the very easy, simple, inexpensive things, then show that we're looking at the other things, this is kind of big budget stuff, I mean, if you start. If we do what we can, because this is an old building.
Right.
And there are simple fixes, put locks on the doors and signs on the doors, and so you don't have to spend eight thousand on a hy, covering the hydraulic system.
Sure.
Can we slowly, I mean, I've not heard a lot of complaints, and I think that the people are so wonderful to help people that need help. Um, help them get in, I helped a lady in one day, I mean, is, is that okay?
Yeah, of course, I mean, that's always okay, um, uh, to help people. Um, but, uh, ultimately, if you, if you do start any sort of renovation, everything just has to be brought up to speed.
What if we don't start?
Then, um, then I don't know that you could move your services to this building.
Unless we have a transition plan to start.
Yes, and then that transition plan, though, um, it would, uh, you'd have to have a good argument for like the length of time that it would take to make it accessible.
But our services are here, and it's working, so why do we have to start?
Because, because it's, it's mandated by law, it's something that should have been looked at already.
So, you and I talked on the phone, that, um, what, what the board's considering is, we have a nearly vacant building that we were thinking selling. And then utilizing some of that funds to make the courthouse accessible, fully accessible. Um, and if necessary, make this building fully accessible, be compliant, so, but obviously, to her point, some of the changes are, are bigger budget, bathrooms are, are not cheap.
Right.
Um, so as long as we have documentation for the employees that are, that are still in that building, if we were to say, move them in here, or even move them in the courthouse, as long as there's a transition plan.
Yeah.
That we're doing that, that would be seen as okay?
I, I, um, I believe so, and I think, because we talked about this too, because technically, the courthouse isn't compliant either, so, I mean, you're, it's not like. So, I mean, you're, it's not like you're moving them from a compliant to a non-compliant, right? You're moving them from a non-compliant to a non-compliant. And so, you know, as long again, as you're, as you have, okay, we're gonna move them. Here, knowing though that we're going to make it compliant, that's the most important thing.
Cause I think the reason why we're thinking here, because between the two, this building that can actually get to a bathroom.
Yes.
In the courthouse, that, that, I mean, if you ever walked into that, that small teeny little elevator. I mean, it says it's a capacity of thirteen, but they have to all be very small, very small children.
Sure.
To get thirteen in there.
Sure.
So that's why I think we were thinking here, because at least in the short term, immediately they would have easy access to a bathroom.
Yes, yes.
It sounds like the courthouse, I called some people yesterday. That is gonna fall under historical preservation and having to start gutting it and trying to put a bathroom on the first floor, they don't even know if it's feasible. Because they're all low bearing walls, where do you run any plumbing? And it does, from what I learned yesterday, I don't think they're willing to force you to do that because the building's going to fall under. It never was designed to be that in its hundred and fifty years ago.
When they, and this predates you, I think.
He did.
When they did the original plans.
No.
Cause when I emailed him, he said that was part of the original plans that were not chosen at the time. It was part of the whole interior redo that they were planning.
The way he called yesterday, I don't know that he has anything plans for a bathroom on that first floor. He has different plans, but I don't.
Okay.
He didn't indicate it was a bathroom.
Okay.
It was removing ceilings and putting things back to original, but not.
But he said the ADA compli- at least in the email, he said I don't know if he was thinking we'd have a new elevator, I don't know.
And that could be, well, I don't know if we could put in a new elevator because of. I called somebody yesterday in one room, and I showed it to him when we tore off the wall. There's like shafts and we, we didn't know if they're coal shafts. Or so can we even make the elevator bigger? Or would we have to go outside of the building like Dallas County did and that's really, really expensive.
How does it, how does it handle when you run into historical buildings? Cause I know we had that challenge at the Capitol.
Yep.
And the same architect that designed our courthouse designed the Capitol.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm doing one.
Yeah, so I mean, you, there is some leeway when it comes to historical buildings, historical landmarks. But the. Where essentially like, let's say if you had something along that you were gonna be altering, accessible route. Or the, the courtroom itself has some significance and so altering something where then you're losing that historical kind of landmark piece. Of it, then, then maybe they would say no. I can't say that like adding an elevator to the courthouse would automatically mean. Even though that it is historical would mean that they can't do it. You know, just because it's historical, it does still need to be accessible as long as it's not impeding on. The historical aspect of the building itself. And that is, that is hard, I guess, to, you know, it can be subjective, right? And so that's probably where even having the, whoever designated it as historical. You know, maybe getting their consultation on, you know, if we were to add an elevator right here in any way would that. Take away from the historical kind of significance of this. Is probably what I would, I would get consultation from whoever made that designation.
So I think the courthouse is gonna be a much heavier lift.
It could be more money than that season.
So.
Elevators are expensive.
Yeah, this building would probably be the most likely to move those employees in, in the news. I still want, I still would like the courthouse to be accessible. I mean, we spent all that money on those ramps.
I, I think you're opening up a can of worms, you don't have to.
But I'm not saying I want to do it right now, I'm just saying I, I, that could be a goal that we go towards. Because we're halfway there, we have ADA ramps that we paid a lot of money for. I'd like to get there because what I don't want is members of the public impeded from the same services that everybody else has because they're.
If you put a bathroom on the first floor of the courthouse. You're going to have, because I'm there a lot, bus tours, they're gonna rush in and all use the bathroom. It will become an instant public bathroom. Because that's what they do, they all rush in and they want to use bathroom. And I don't then, that concerns me of the safety of anybody from the public coming into the courthouse using the bathroom. Are we going to have a guard, somebody that watches that? I went in the basement one day and there was a person down there.
Well, this wouldn't, well.
I didn't know who he, well.
I mean, that's a separate issue.
Well, it's not, it's going to lead into, because once you have.
This is a public building Diane, these are public buildings, we can't restrict the public.
Well. As we open ourselves up, it's going to be, you just
I mean, they can technically go up to bathrooms now.
And they do, they go upstairs or they say, eh, I'll go to come.
So that, I think between the two buildings, this building is closer to getting what we need. I'd like the courthouse to be a goal, not necessarily immediate goal to your form.
Longer term.
Longer term goal. Because I mean, we have to be forward thinking on stuff like that. And I still would like to have it to where members of the public who need accessibility, have accessibility, have the same abilities as everybody else. To access the courthouse. So.
I, I, I have a point of clarification. There was reference of if you move people from a non-accessible building to a non-accessible building. That's one thing, but I understand, it was stated, I don't know, that the public health currently is inaccessible.
The doorways are not.
Okay.
I wanted.
There is a bathroom. The doorways are not, they're not wide enough that front doors.
There is a bathroom right off the front door that, again, it looks accessible because it has the, but I don't. You're the measurement wizard, so.
So you have to thirty-two inches.
It's clearance.
For the, for the doorway and then we would have to check the clearance between, which I didn't even know there had to be clearance between around the actual toilet.
Yes.
Just going by pictures, the, like the urinal, I think is, I called correctly, is next to the toilet, just like in a men's bathroom. So we'd have to check the distance between the toilet and the urinal, make sure that's wide enough for a wheelchair fit.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, how many is thirty-six?
I actually believe it's thirty-two as well.
Thirty-two?
Yes, and yeah, so then the accessible stall itself is gonna be sixty inches wide.
So, so yeah, so I think that this is good information, gives us a few steps to, to move forward with. So what would be your recommendation from here?
My first recommendation is to do an ADA self-evaluation. Because I think that it's hard to make any decision if you don't kind of fully understand. What, what are the barriers within any of your buildings or programs or anything like that? And I think that will help you then decide, cause, cause maybe through that you'll be like, you know, maybe it doesn't make sense to move here for whatever reason. So, but I just think you have to do like a full comprehensive sort of self-evaluation first.
So at this point though, I mean, the, the ADA evaluation is gonna be part of our transition plan.
Yeah.
So, and part of the transition plan is we, we want to sell the building so we have the funds.
To then do that.
To do that. So right now, there's only one full-time person and two part-time people that are there that use the building. And it's a forty-six hundred square foot building. So, and we have space with the arrangement, we have space in the courthouse, we have space here. So that's what we're thinking. So if we were to, to do that and we have a, a transition plan that says ADA evaluation with the goal to be ADA compliant by. Whatever date.
Yeah, and it can be, and it can be phased too, like it doesn't, the whole building doesn't have to necessarily be compliant all at once, right? Like you can have phases, so this year we're gonna put a new elevator in, this year we're gonna do, you know. Just have to show and that, and but during those phases that you also are programmatically then coming up with ways to. To achieve accessibility to the best of your ability.
So we could, we could even do phases on this building too, like phase one, add the right signage, do the right markings in the parking lot. Phase two.
Yeah, cause that's basically your readily achievable barriers, right? Those are like the quick fixes that you can do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Thank you for coming, I really appreciate it very much.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
You're very welcome.
Do you guys have any questions?
And I can, and I plan to write up, you know, just kind of this informal assessment and provide you what I have and. And kind of any ADA kind of language or information that you can use to.
Do you have a card?
Not on me, I'm sorry.
Tell me her name again.
Yep, it's Molly, M-O-L-L-Y. And then my last name is spelled W-U as an umbrella, E as an elephant, B as a boy, K-E-R, Lecker.
Thank you, so if you want, I can send you her contact information that I have.
Okay.
I'll send it to you, email, so you have it.
Well, you could just email her and then she could reply to all of us with the report.
Yeah.
If she has it.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yep.
We don't have a contact.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, of course, thank you guys.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Yeah, of course, yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so. So we're still in the discussion area about annex, what do you, what do you guys think? Should we. Get a date on the agenda for a hearing on sale of public health building? And start with the idea that we have a transition plan in place? I think some of the suggestions are easy fixes, like the markings outside the parking lot, putting better signage out there. Find out from the plumbing code if having two unisex handicap bathrooms would be sufficient. I mean, I would love, I would really like to have, you know. Cause right now the men say men's restroom and, and then there's like. Handicap symbol basically saying, if you're handicapped, you have to use the men's restroom. And she said that, you can't do that. So I'd like to be, have that bathroom made accessible. You know, as part of our transition plan. But if we are grandfathered in under safe harbor, then we technically don't need to do it, but I think, I think we should.
I think once you, if you're grandfathered in, I think you should take advantage of that. Once you open this up, you're gonna open yourself up to beds coming in saying, you've gotta do this, this, this and this and this. And we have such good staff that they make it easy for people. I never hear complaints, but once we start, there's gonna be no end and it's gonna be so costly.
Well, the thing is eventually though Diane, we're gonna have to do that because I don't want to be denying access to members of the public.
I don't think we do, I don't think we do, and I think sometimes let sleeping dogs lie.
According to her, we're not compliant.
She didn't say, go paint the signs on, go paint that, that, that paint, she didn't paint, they didn't paint that that long ago and it was a terrible job and it never stays. Wasn't that, was probably five years ago they painted that and it's just awful.
Well, we're gonna have to repaint it anyway because we have
It needs repainted.
The right, the correct markings.
Should be repainted maybe every couple of years, cause it doesn't stay on and it looks terrible.
So, and then.
And that's not very expensive.
She was happy to hear about the new doors they're gonna be putting in, the automatic. You know, we just have to have signs like on the south door saying handicap accessible is on the north door.
We will.
We can do that, those are easy, low hanging fruit fixes. But I don't see, you know, whether we're safe harbor or not, it doesn't sound like we have an issue moving people into this building.
We don't have, I don't think we have issues.
So.
I, I think the only, the main concern would be where we put veterans affairs to allow them the privacy that they need. Given those walls don't roll up.
We have to make the walls roll up.
You're not gonna.
The other option, the other option too, we can do what. What the otter's office do is actually have a separate, build in a separate office in that office. To where there's walls that go already up, so if they need privacy, they can shut the door. And then they can still have an open part of that office, still like a table or something like that.
Well, I, I, I guess where, where are you assuming? Cause I know when I talked with Sean, you know, we discussed how regularly works with treasurer's office.
Well, how, what does that mean? I mean, this is, I regularly worked with other people, but doesn't mean I walk to this building.
What if you
You do get emailed.
Right.
Most people now in businesses, they don't, you don't go to the person's office to person because everything is online. So, so it's twenty twenty-five. So, I, you can actually regularly work with them. I mean, the treasurer's office and the otter's office regularly work together all the time, but they're not in the same building. And they work probably together more than the assessor's office and the treasurer's office. So, so I don't think that, that's a barrier per se.
I do need to ensure that you could put those walls to a ceiling if that were the thought. Because of the HVAC versus.
Well, they have, they have many splits there, in that office, they actually have their own, it's a mini split. So it's different than the rest of the building. So if we put the walls all the way up, it's, they actually have their own. And that was done.
Oh, wouldn't we do the mini splits, was it earlier this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, so they actually have their own climate control up there.
But if you needed a private office and you don't have walls, but you're gonna need another one.
Kylie, do you need
Just being cool about private op- the private office.
No, you just leave the door open, no one's trying to close the doors. It'd be a short, short standing room, that's true. What were you gonna say Diane, I'm sorry?
What about Amanda's office, does it have windows?
Not to the outside outside, but all around it.
The blinds would have to be opened.
Is that a room veterans affair could have? Cause that's
I just moved into that one, but sure. I mean, I, it, I can move to where I
Well, well, you have, that you're gonna have two new staff members, is that gonna be crowded for you?
Yeah, I mean. But I'm not saying I, I'm not above making compromises, so.
Okay.
So how would that work to help veterans affair, it'd be handy for them? It would, I don't want it to encroach on you though.
But what I'm, all I'm saying is that it's not soundproof. It's not, I mean, you can.
Well, I don't know if his office is soundproof.
I don't think his office right now is sound.
I don't know if any office is soundproof.
Yeah.
No, especially when some, some people have louder voices than others.
You walk through the courthouse, little kids yell, you can hear it upstairs.
Yeah, the courthouse is the last one that's soundproof.
Is that something we could talk about or I don't want to put you on the spot, is it? We have to have Thaddeus, it would be acceptable, and there's locked cabinets because he private things.
Yeah, we have those cabinets full, but.
He can get his own filing cabinet.
I mean, it's, there's space for them, correct? And that's a pretty big office, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, and, I mean, that's a, that's a good idea Diane, actually. And then.
And what are you gonna do with public help? We don't really have
We don't really know. I still think, they have a meeting tonight, so I'll find, find out more tonight. But I think we still need to have in this little CICS office. I think we still need to build separate offices there just in case. We need an office because HHS still needs a spot. They still need a spot.
Well, there's lock, if they can have whoever they want there.
Yeah, so I think we still need to do that. Forward thinking is that if, even if we don't have anyone to sit in it right now, I think we're thinking, if it's available, like say if something comes up or say, I don't know. We need an office for somebody, it's already there and it's ready to go.
Okay.
Well, there is one already there and ready to go.
I mean, a second, like, remember
Well, there's two, there's the wall and then there's that separate ones with the door.
I mean, putting up a wall, another wall to create two, like splitting that sitting area they have, right when you walk in and turn left, there's a sitting area. Put a wall in there and split it so there's
Then you'll have three separate offices.
Correct. Correct, and I think that would be, where that would prepare if there's ever a need to have someone sit or say for instance. You need the space, we could put Thaddeus in there. With all that, I mean, again, I'm just trying to forward think here.
What are you gonna do, that building appraised really high, what are you gonna do if it doesn't sell? We sit on it, then it, we're sitting on there and empty publicly on the building.
Well, what I don't know, I don't know Diane.
That's, that's five hundred thousand is, that's a chunk of change.
So you're saying don't try because it potentially might not be able to sell.
I don't know if we should keep it, I don't, we could never build that for five hundred thousand. That's a great big fortress type building.
I think we should at least try, move forward and, and, because we can't really do anything until we formally approve the sale. And then once we formally approve the sale, then we can start moving forward with, with the next steps. Now, to your point, if it doesn't sell, I don't know what the, we'd have to find out what the rules are. If it, if it doesn't sell at the minimum reserve price, which is the appraisal. I don't know what the next steps are, we have to find out about that. But what can immediately be done is after we move people out of there. We, we don't have cabinet in it anymore, we don't have phones there anymore, we don't have to maintain it anymore, so that's a saving, that's an immediate savings right there.
If we continue If we continue to grow as we are, and Des Moines is approaching, that would be a great DMB building.
Well.
Because I, I don't know, and then you could do motorcycle tests out there, you could do off, and that's good income.
But when do you think that that would be? Is that ten years from now?
I don't know, I don't know.
Exactly, we don't know.
But getting rid of it, and then in ten years, rebuilding it is going to be millions and millions of dollars.
We can't.
This one we can't expand on.
Here, we can't predict the future.
We could actually here, we have parking lots based.
Yeah, but then where would they park?
Uh, we can't predict the future, and, and I don't think it's wise to hang on to an empty building. That's costing money that we can sell and put back on the tax rolls.
Can we lease it?
I don't know if I want to be a landlord.
Yeah, I don't know, we can't, we're not supposed to be.
I mean, it's, let's, yeah, we're just brainstorming, right? It's worth, it's worth chucking into.
Could you maybe look into what it would, what that would potentially look like? I'm not sure we can lease because we got rid of all of our county homes.
I don't think we want to do that. I think why don't we just try? Let's just try and sell it, see what happens. And then if it doesn't sell at the reserve price, then, I mean, it is a nice lot, it's over one and a half acres in town.
It's one and a half acres and it's a thirty-eight hundred square foot building, top and bottom. It's built like four.
According to the assessor thing, it says forty-six.
Yeah, forty-six, two floors.
Two floors, and you've been in the basement, those ceilings are high.
It's a real high ceiling basement, it's a beautiful basement.
So.
And it has great rooms in the basement, it's got.
I don't know what it was originally built for, do you know?
Yeah, Reed's owned it.
What was it used for?
With offices, wasn't it Patty, Reed's, do you remember?
I think so.
Yeah.
Those offices?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they had a lot of, and there is, if you go in the very far back of it, in the bathroom, uh, there's a secret door that goes down some steps into a room.
Oh, that could be a selling feature.
Well.
Um, I.
I'm not sure what it was used for.
Um, so I think what we need to do though is, I mean, this is good information. Um, and, I mean, I, Diane, I don't disagree with you in the fact is, you know, you know, once you start on something, you have to keep going. But on the other side is, um, as a government building, we still need to be accessible. I'm a little uncomfortable not knowing things are not accessible and keeping them that way, that, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. So, I mean, we can certainly discuss it more, but I think the first step right now is to, to see if we can sell that building. Because if we do sell it, then we will have funds to do things, to improve things.
It might be nice to put the funds into the general fund or in case things go really poorly and not spend the money. Sometimes if you, it's better not to go for bear. Sometimes if you just lay low and say nothing, nobody complains and we get along. But once we start, then we're, we've got a bullseye on our back and they're paying attention.
Okay.
Because if we start with that courthouse, somebody steps in and says, gee, we're gonna make you sprinkle it. We're gonna make you put an elevator on the outside.
I am very uncomfortable. I am very uncomfortable with having so much s- space sitting empty for our needs. I, I mean, of course there's predictions for growth, but I'm not sure why we should continue to pay and maintain these facilities that are nearly empty.
Well, I was talking about starting on remodeling and stuff, there will be no end to this stuff.
So, well, that's, that's.
A public health building, if, I think you're gonna vote to sell it, so.
But I think, I think we need to do this self-evaluation and to Molly's point, on all of our buildings, all of our facilities, you know, because like, shoot, look, what about the elderly services building? You know, and.
They just put that new entrance and they complained.
That's all they complained.
I said complaining right now, they spent a whole.
But we have, but we have the.
They have all kinds of grants.
Okay.
But the back half of that building is sitting empty.
No, it's the.
The offices, the offices are empty.
Well, there's issues, it's a very old building.
I understand that, but it's also our real estate that needs to either be invested in, or will, we're just gonna let it sit empty?
Steve is using, Steve, you're using that building for, to store in, correct?
We use the.
Yeah, they use.
The garage space for storing our, yeah, skid loader and equipment.
And the office is very small, and when we slept out there, we had to sleep in that closet. That's a small, um, we, I don't know what we could use it for.
I have been out there, but I mean, to me, it makes more sense, for example, for Mitch to be out there near the Sheriff's Department. He can, he can work from anywhere, that's where he's storing stuff as well, as Steve. There's plenty of room in that bay for more than just Mitch's stuff.
I suppose you could move Mitch out here, put on, you have to talk to him, then put the assessor.
I say, no. I'm just gonna say this, I know you guys don't wanna, I'm not saying you don't want to hear it, but I'd have to, this is part of the other thing that I was talking about the last time we brought this up. Is that, I mean, part of the ADA is the fire, and so if you want to open this, this, do that ADA compliance, the test that she was, or going through all of that. You know, another thing that we're gonna hit on is the fire.
Actually, ADA, the fire is not part of ADA.
Fire, what about fire, what, please explain.
Well, we're not fire compliant in this building.
I, I'm not concerned so much probably about a fire, I'm gonna be stone cold honest, what I'm concerned in this building is an active shooter.
Well, yeah, me too.
A fire, I think you're gonna smell it, Steve, it's mostly brick building, I think you're gonna be able to get out. I'm more worried about someone to be with a weapon, I mean, because I'm not sure.
Concerned every single government building.
It is, but this one, there aren't a lot of exits.
No, not.
Maybe that door, you should put an exit on it, so if something bad would happen, they could at least find one.
I think, I think that's an easy fix, I mean, print out a piece of paper and stick it on there for now and see if it can.
I mean, I, the thing is, is what I'm telling, what I'm saying is that there are not enough exits, whether it's a fire, whether it's a shooter. We're not up to code in this, and if you guys don't think that, then I can get somebody here in about two minutes, and you can, they can tell you that.
So, I guess.
That'd be great, because I'm still waiting for this report, you know, you did the walkthrough, I still want to see anything on that. But if you have that information, that'd be great for us to have.
Yeah, and that could be part of the, you know, if we decide to make improvements on this building, we can use that funds for that, so.
You could have a firefighter, or have you ever had, have you ever been trained on getting out of fire and active shooters?
Not active shooter, but fire, yes.
Yeah, and we, yeah.
So, so um, it's not like we're not listening, I'm just, the, the, we specifically asked her, she was there to do it before ADA compliant.
I know, but part of ADA is fire, and I think that you guys think that it's not, and it is. It is.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was asking for your information.
Just remember that if you're gonna go down that road, that's all I'm saying, I'm, I'm just saying, if you're gonna go down that road, just remember that too, that, that's it. I'm not saying anything more than that, I'm just trying to.
You just want us to look into that.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
So I, we can email Molly and ask about that.
Well, it sounded like you already knew though, why, how we were not fire compliant, so it'd be great if you could share that information.
Well, she did at the last meeting.
No, she asked for the, the actual report and stuff.
Oh, right, but.
Kylie, she.
Yes, I did, I mean, you guys don't wanna, you guys are gonna say that.
Kylie said it at a meeting?
No, I mean the actual report, the documented stuff, what we need to do.
Right, but you guys were saying that you wanted to, it's the ADA stuff, and that what I'm saying is something completely different, and I was like, okay, that's fine. You guys are gonna address the ADA, okay, that's fine. And I get that, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue, all I'm saying is that if you're gonna do this whole, the whole thing, that that is also a part of that, and it ties into it, that's it.
So if we do the ADA self-evaluation, because the documents I got from her for that, um, that's why I invited her here. Is because it's an extensive documentation that we, if we did the self-evaluation, all these things we have to go through. Fire really was not it, so I can circle back with her and ask about that question, if that's something that is just missing? Or that's something we have to have a different professional come in and ask? Because that, that could be something the safety committee can come up to.
Well, that's, that's exactly right, there's so much overlap, but there's, you know, to your point about the active shooter, you know, that's, that's another thing. You know, that kind of training and preparedness that we need to have, and why Mitch stepped in, because all this, there, there's a connection through all of it. And I'm not saying we don't need to look at the fire, but you, you said there's fire issues, but I don't know those specifics yet. So that's what I'm trying to just get this information, so we can understand.
When, when we had the deputy here, that was my fault, but I didn't have you involved with that. But he gave us more of a safety walkthrough. Um, he did not feel comfortable speaking for what a fire professional would say. In our county, we have Rick Schaefer, who is a professional firefighter in Des Moines. I contacted him to come through, uh, to see if he'll come to the building and do us that, uh, do a walkthrough for us. I will talk to Don about getting some, something written, some kind of report for what he observed. And then see if he would even want to come back and speak with you guys about it sometime, I'm sure that he would, he's, he's a very good deputy.
He said that he was going to do a written thing, I mean, I asked him, and he said he was going to, so that's great.
Because if there's something we can do immediately.
Get him to do that, bring it to us, that's great.
And then he's willing to do it at the courthouse as well. And he has, he, he has on him at all times.
Rick Schaefer, yeah, because that's their expertise.
Yes, I think Rick would be great to come in here.
He's been a firefighter for a long.
Yeah, he's a very good resource.
So we do, um, we do have the panic buttons here. Um, but to, uh, to your guys' point, have we ever done an active shooter training at all?
No, and we need to, when I worked for the feds, you do it all, I mean, we have them a lot.
So that could be something that, I don't know, that's something the safety committee want to follow up on, the.
Because Don can do Alice.
I'm sorry?
Don was trained in Alice.
Okay, so, so fire, um, active shooter, and.
Tornadoes is another class, um, that you, what, where do you go, what do you do?
So is Rick Schaefer the fire marshal?
He's the fire chief of St. Charles.
He's a professional firefighter for.
Yeah, West Des Moines.
Okay. Do you think that the, the state fire marshal could provide that?
It certainly could, but then you might end up with a lot.
Don't go through those too rare.
So, I mean, we could go that way.
A longer list, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't want to open the door to the state fire marshal, call Rick and he'll keep you on.
Okay, so if we, if someone can circle back with Rick.
Yes.
And have him look at both buildings?
Yes.
Okay, and then, because we may not be able to, to do something immediately, but the low hanging fruit we can certainly do. I think it's good if the board knows, so then we can plan it.
Okay, well, I'll make sure that Jessica's involved in that.
Yeah, please make sure, she's on the safety committee.
Yep.
Um, and then, um, the active shooter, that would be Don?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's, there's a couple others, we have city police that are trained in it, we have, we have, we have good resources, Don's come, he's done the walkthrough.
Okay.
I mean, he's, he's been a deputy for a couple decades, he's pretty good.
So could you work with Jess as part of the safety committee to kind of figure out, because I would like to offer that training to the employees in, in both buildings?
Oh, very much, yep, because this, this stuff's all applicable outside of work. You know, you can take it everywhere you go.
Things don't, things seem to be getting crazier.
Yes, they do.
I think that'd be good training to have.
Okay.
Um, because while we have the, the panic buttons, I don't want to be relying on that because, you know. It still takes time for people to arrive.
Yeah, and we had our questions of if somebody hits the assessor's office, we don't know. But then again, do we want to know?
Well, are you, you should, well, the way it was programmed, you may not be included because you're new, but the way it was programmed is that if they hit a button, the button is designed to, when it goes off, it rings, uh, first responders and lets them know which button was pushed.
Okay.
So like, if the assessor hits it, they'll say panic in the assessor's office. Or if it's zoning, panic and zoning, so our first responders know exactly what the issue is. But that just tells them what's going on, with the rest of the employees, um, I want to make sure they have the knowledge to handle it until first responders arrive.
Yeah, because they would need to immediately start hiding.
Correct.
You know, I mean, or get out if possible.
Correct.
If you're in this building, if somebody's down here yelling at Ryan really horrible, can you hear that upstairs so you know?
I've had, I've had people on my side say that they could hear.
On your side?
So, Brandy and Sean or, yeah, his employees.
So they're kind of aware, because in the courthouse, you can hear, I had a guy this close to my face and he was yelling. But the cops upstairs could hear, and it took them about two seconds to get down there, vacuum right into the corner. Because they can hear, but you can't only hear on your side.
Well, we discussed it at the courthouse security committee meeting, I know Kylie mentioned before, you know, if somebody hits a panic button, we don't know. But the problem is, and what was discussed in that meeting, was if, if you, if you make that an audible sound, then the bad guy knows that you've alerted someone and he could start shooting.
So you may not be aware of this because this predates you, the way, and this may be good for testing. The way the panic buttons were, were designed and set up is to where not only are the first responders notified, but an email goes out to everybody saying that there is an active situation.
We did not know that.
Yes.
How come we didn't get an email when those were being tested then?
I've never known.
Okay.
Is this in like the handbook at all?
We had.
Employee handbook?
Accidental push that done.
Okay, so, I don't know if it's in the handbook, and I don't know if we want to put what it does in the handbook.
Well, but like, I, as a new employee, I've never given the information, pretty at this. I don't know what to do.
So, this should probably be part of the orientation.
What orientation?
So this would be something we discussed with HR. So I think this should be part of the orientation, I don't think it's wise we put what our plans are in public document.
No.
For safety. Um, so, uh, I think what we should probably do is do some testing, because the reason, this particular vendor that was chosen was because it offers those abilities to where, if there's a panic button, say, if you have a guy in your face, in your office, you hit the button and notifies first responders, it's also supposed to notify, and it may not be set up this way, so we'll have to check it. It's supposed to notify, be an email, all the other offices if there's an issue.
I think it does.
So people know.
I've never, I've never.
So people know not to walk into the courthouse if there's an issue.
Because they were, I think Chip just, he just had them tested, it was just a few months ago. They were all tested, so we should have gotten emails when they were being tested.
So, it could be that it's not set up, so this is something we need to test and verify, so.
You might take a de-escalation class too, to de-escalate.
This is probably something maybe.
I could follow up on that.
Come follow up on, I can send you the information on the vendor, um, but that should be a feature in there, that was one of the features that, that, uh, helped us choose this vendor actually. So, because what we don't want is to have, you know, Kylie walk over to the Otter's Office and there's an ongoing issue in the courthouse.
I know, and that, and that was what we were talking, you know, what we were talking about, was like, how do we, how do we know? And like, if there, if there is that kind of situation, even in our own building, it's like, we would want to shut our door, you know?
Right, so.
So we have, we have plans, you're gonna reach out to Don and Rick and give us reports, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, so yeah, so fire chief, active shooter training, um, you're gonna follow up on the.
Panic buttons.
Panic buttons.
And the active shooter with Mitch.
Right, so, I mean, this is, this has kind of gone outside of the ADA discussion, but to your point. To be, to your point, um, you, you, you believe this is all, the fire was part of the whole ADA, so we're gonna check on that.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm glad you brought up the safety issue, so we can address that. And, and maybe put in a report for our next meeting if you have that available. Mitch, could we possibly have an update maybe at our meeting on the fourteenth?
I'll check with Don, I mean, I hope so.
If not, just, you know, progress towards that?
Yes.
That would be great.
Yep.
Um, so, going back to, um, I, I, I think though going to move, to move this, this bar forward, I think we need to start, uh, we need to pull the trigger on the sales of the public health building. So what I'd like is to get on the agenda next week is, uh, a resolution to set a date for the public hearing. So, uh, to move forward with that.
You're gonna sell it, so just do it at the next meeting.
Well, we have to do, the next meeting.
Oh, you have to publish, alright.
Publish the public hearing, and then we have a public hearing, and then we decide whether or not to get that going. So, uh, I'm gonna do that, and then the, if we're done discussing ADA stuff, we can move on to setting a meeting for closed.
Yeah, I got to press it in after that.
Okay, so what do your schedules look like?
What do you want?
Um.
Like, yeah, how soon are you thinking, like soon or next week or?
Uh, well, what I wanted to get is a few days at times, and then we can provide that. Um, did you get an answer from?
He's, the response was he's flexible and whatever our preference is.
Okay, so what do your guys' schedules look like?
How about Monday?
Monday, the thirteenth?
Yeah. And this is for closed session?
Mm-hmm.
What about Tuesday, the fourth?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
That's a night meeting, I'm okay with that.
Oh, I don't know how long it'll take, but.
That's true, we can do it.
So the fourteenth is a night meeting normally, so do we want to do a morning meeting on the fourteenth? So the fourteenth is a night meeting normally, so do we wanna do a morning meeting on the fourteenth? Are you available? Is that not good for you? Would Monday be better? Or a different day?
No, I can, I can do Tuesday to fourteen.
What time?
Um, so you're wanting to come morning and then come back later for the evening meeting?
Well, I have to. I work seven thirty to noon on Tuesdays, so I come back anyway. Then I don't have anything in the afternoon.
So would it be, so to, to you, do you, uh, cause that's a lot of driving in one day for both you and I.
That's why I'm wondering, would you do like a four o'clock for the closed session break and then come back for the night meeting? When you have five to six open to go grab a bite or what have you?
What do you think about that Diane? Do you agree with that?
I don't.
Or is that too much? Cause she's here from, you said seven to noon?
I've always been here.
And then she has to go home and then turn around and come back. I don't know if that's.
I don't care. I'll come back. Just get it done.
We don't wanna create.
Doesn't matter.
So, I mean, I, we don't have to do the fourteen. I mean, I'm open to Monday or Wednesday or.
Why don't you just do it at? How long is it gonna take, you know?
Probably not very long. It's just an update.
Half an hour? So let's go from.
At the most.
Go five thirty and, and then just go into the regular meeting. You wanna do that? That'd work for you, then you don't have to be coming back and forth. Just do it from five thirty. You think it's half an hour, then go for four, I don't care.
Well, I mean, it's gonna be, we're gonna have probably a long meeting. We have been, so I mean, couldn't we do it at?
The other option is, is that, um, let's see, what, uh.
Why don't you pick two dates and that way just in case.
Okay.
Can we do it at, at, at five, so we can make sure we have plenty of time in between those meetings? We don't run long.
Cause our meeting's at six.
Right.
On the fourteen.
Okay, so do it at five o'clock.
If we do it at five, then we meet closed session five to five thirty to go breathe in the meeting at six.
Okay, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, but to your point, you want another option? So do we wanna give, uh, do we wanna do another day to give them an option in case, um, we have, I mean, Wednesday, I can do, I have a meeting at noon, but I can probably do any time after one thirty. Uh, Monday, I can do any time. Thursday, we have that at ISAC thing. Are you making the food for that?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be good. Um, so we have the ISAC meeting at, on Thursday from eleven to one. We could always do it after that. Or before that.
I have a D cap board meeting at noon, uh, but that's a call in. So, I mean, I could do it before the ISAC luncheon. I could do ten on Thursday.
Okay, could you do after that? Cause she's gonna be preparing and I don't wanna have.
No, that's not, I can do that.
I've got, the meeting I have is scheduled from twelve to one thirty. Actually, it's gonna be at Wilder.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's, it's offsite.
Oh, okay.
So never mind that.
What about the thirteenth?
Yeah, what about the thirteenth Monday? I'm pretty open on that.
I'm open after ten.
How about one to two, Monday, thirteenth?
Let me just do one more double check. Okay, yeah.
One to two is finally.
One to two on Monday? Okay, so, uh, Steve, do you want, do you wanna tell him those two times?
I will.
And let us, let us know what works?
Yes.
Or let her know what works and we can schedule it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tuesday, the fourteenth at five P M, Monday, the thirteenth, one to two.
Yeah.
Very good.
And you pick.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, anything else to discuss before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I second? Any discussion?
Alright, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.